Good morning. I call this special called meeting of the Dunwoody City Council on June 12th, 2023 at 8:00 a.m. To order unless there's an objection, seeing none. I call this meeting to order. Councilman Secunder, could you lead us in the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold a purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Public comments, I have no cards. There'll be another public comment section at the end of the meeting. With that, Mr. Venicki, I think we are ready for you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Welcome to the first of three public hearings on adopting the 2023 millage rate. We'll open with a brief presentation about the millage rate and some financial indications of the city, and then open the floor up for public comments, and the floor is yours. So with that, and we are testing out the new system where they're sharing the presentation. So I'm checking with the disembodied voice to make sure that it's being presented. Can you see it? First off, why public hearings? Just to let everybody know, for tax purposes, the county's property appraiser regularly reassesses everybody's house value and every commercial property in the county. Now, it's on a rotating basis. It's done in aggregate. There's 700,000 citizens. It's a big amount of work. But the thing to make sure you leave this public hearing with is that Dunwoody is keeping the exact same property tax this year as it did last year. If the value of the property goes up, though, in Dunwoody, state law actually requires that you show a millage increase and you advertise it even if you keep the rate the same. So even though the city council is keeping the rate the same this year, we still have to advertise it as a tax increase. And that's part of the thing about the millage rates here. If the assessed value goes up, you have to advertise it. Now, the thing that we'll get to later in the presentation is this city long ago froze those for homesteaded properties. So in other words, Dunwoody residents that have filed for it and qualified for a homestead exemption have their property values frozen. So in no way, probably, I think it's we're at 85%. Eighty-five percent of the homes here will see no tax increase whatsoever, even if their property values went up. Even with the law like that on the city books, state law trumps it and requires us to advertise. Now, following the law, for those that aren't knowledgeable about it, Coda, Georgia actually has a very long part of this, and the Department of Revenue has a very long section of rules and regulations about how to do these increases. And for a person that's been involved with this for years, I'll just tell you, it is a very arcane thing, but it's very step by step. So we've gone through three of the steps that we need to. On June 1st, the notice of tax increase, the amount that we were showing at 1.57% was published. Basically, it's a paid advertisement in the non-legal section of our organ. We have to send out a press release in conjunction with that. So those were released at the same time. We posted it on the city's website. So those are the steps that have already taken place. Today is the first of three public hearings. If you have two on the same day like we do today, one must be before noon, and that's this one, and one will be between 6:00 and 7:00, and that will be at tonight's meeting. After that, later this month, what's called the five-year ad. It is not the same as the notice of tax increase will be published in the crier. And the final public hearing for adoption will be on July 10th. Now, let's get to the nitty-gritty on this. Dunwoody's tax rate for 2023 is proposed to be exactly the same as it was in 2022, 3.040 mils, and that was the cap instituted at the beginning of the city. For the typical Dunwoody home, and we're kind of looking at the average home here, a half-million-dollar home whose value was frozen at 400,000. Now, a person that's been here 15 years has a bigger amount. A person that's been here one year has a less, but that's about the average. The average home here pays $296 a year, less than $300 a year. And for those that want to do the math, eighty-one cents a day, eighty-one cents a day in taxes for an average home.
The worth, that means the assessed. Can I ask you a question now, or should I wait? Sorry.
Yeah, you can answer.
Yeah, you go ahead.
Yeah, right. The worth, you mean that's from the assessed?
That's the assessed. So fair market value is what I'm saying there. Technically, the assessed value is 40% of that. That's the fair market value.
Based on your property tax statement.
Yes, it will show as the fair market value on that. There'll be two figures.
Thank you.
Can I ask you another question? Just because you said 15 years would be, if they'd owned their home, 15 years would be?
A lot more. Like, in other words, I show it going from 500 to 400, that's the average. But a person that's been here 15 years, it would go from 500 to, and I'm making up a number because I've never bothered to look it up, 250.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you. I've heard some different things. Thank you.
Okay, now let's talk a little bit of what I want to start showing regularly here, and that's the aggregate tax rate. Okay, cities in the cab can opt in and out of different services with the county. So we all have different tax rates. We also, in some instances, use county services. Now, the county services that we use, sanitation and water and sewer, are not done as taxes. They're done as service charges. So what this does is it takes every jurisdiction in the county, shows their city tax, shows the county tax for that area, and shows the amount for the schools there, and adds them up as the aggregate tax burden. Now, some things to know about, Brookhaven has different districts that charge higher amounts. So they have Brookhaven A, B, and regular Brookhaven. And another point of clarity, Decatur's digest is valued at 50%, and that's from a very long action, very long ago, and it won't be changing. So it's a little bit, has to always have an asterisk with it. But when you add up all the rates together, Dunwoody's is the lowest aggregate rate in the county. It is the lowest tax rate for a home here. And one other thing that's not reflected in this, the city of Dunwoody gives a one-mill exemption for homesteaded properties. Now, what we're listing on here is the actual nominal rate. So your average homeowner is actually instead of at 39,233, 38,233. Now, either Shambly or Dorville has added this also, so now we have two cities that do it now.
Dorville.
Dorville. So Dorville's needs to be thought of in that way going forward, but that's to show you that ours is not only the lowest rate on paper, but actually the lowest rate when applied. Now, this is the same house we were talking about earlier, and typically how their tax bill will look like. And again, this is the tax bill, does not include sanitation, nor does include streetlights or stormwater. But if you take a look, I'm showing two different charts going forward on the burden for it. But in both cases, the lion's share of your property tax bill is the school system. Depending upon how one looks at it, it's between 66 and 84%. The difference that we're showing there is what's called the e-host credit, and I bring that up because it will be a topic over the next few years. The host, which is a sales tax penny, forgives some property taxes. It does have a priority order. The first priority is for countywide taxes. So that would be Grady's Tax, and that would also be the general fund for county operations. So your average homeowner in 2023 won't be paying taxes for those two areas. They would still have to pay fire for all except for Decatur in Atlanta and bonds if they were in part of the bonds that were approved historically. Now, I bring this up again because in the next year, maybe 2023, 2024, could be 2025, the county may collect enough sales tax on e-host where the county taxes will be forgiven. And if that is at 100%, city taxes would start to be forgiven. So sometime in the near future, we may be showing a reduction of that. We won't know until sales and values creep up, and it's an annual reassessment. So it's something just to put in your ear to talk about it a later date. Again, I just talked about the two different ways of looking at it. No matter what you got, your city taxes are one of the smallest portions of your tax bill. No, 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 let me stop for a second here. We keep hearing in the news and everywhere else about bonds. Where are they? They're not on here. That is because it is currently on the ballot for November. And in the 2023, there will be no tax whatsoever for bonds. It must be approved by the voters first before anything happens. So in that case, that's the reason it doesn't show up on any of these bills. The earliest it would show up on is 2024. That's exactly what that slide said. Forgot to advance. Okay, more on freezing taxes. I just want to reiterate this for everyone. The city of Dunwoody, for almost all residential houses, we're at about 85% on it, and the rest are probably rental properties or secondary homes, have frozen assessment values for city taxes. So in other words, if you get something from the chief property appraiser or the tax commissioner in the past month that says, here's your new value, just be aware your exemption goes up if you're a homesteaded property, so your tax bill will be exactly the same. If you have lived in your house since 2009 and applied for this, you are paying in 2023 just a little bit more because the rate has changed from 2.7 to 3.04, but basically close to the same amount over that time. Now, let's talk a little bit about health checkup, and I like to use this with the millage rate. This is the year-over-year change in the total net digest for Dunwoody. Now, the information we've gotten in the past month is we're at a 6.2% increase. For budgetary purposes, we had budgeted 3%, just so you know, we're roughly 2.9, 3.0. So we've had three years running of this. Now, like I say, with all things with property values, it's not necessarily always the same year-over-year. There are ups and downs. The early ones in 2011 and 2012, those figures go down. That's the Great Recession leftovers, as we call it. And then the decrease in 2020 has a lot to do with a lawsuit on assessment values that came into effect in that year. So that was the drop there. It's always been pretty good for Dunwoody, but we've had three years running of 6% growth. Now, this is one way to look at it, year-over-year change. I want to show you the total digest value here at the 40% value over the lifespan of the city. As you've seen, we've gone from just under 2.5 billion to just over 3.5 billion, okay? It has steadily gone up. Now, there are ups and downs in individual years. Now, part of this is I want to bring up the fact because we've talked about bonds, and we've talked about the math involved with them. If the city had issued bonds in 2009 at one mil, the tax rate for that bond would be .8 mils now. The rate changes based upon the years and things go up. So this is looking at it in a long-term fashion. That's just to show value. Okay, now, need to stop one more time on this. There's constantly a thing about running deficits, and how can you do that while the tax digest is growing? I want to say definitively that since COVID has started, the general fund of Dunwoody has not run a deficit. Now, I will say that the math involved is a little bit complicated, so you'll have to bear with me. Let's go through some technical terms first. What's a deficit? A deficit is when expenditures exceed revenues. That's like just for everywhere else. Let's talk a specific term. A structural deficit is when ongoing expenditures exceed ongoing revenues. Now, the state of Georgia, accounting standards for Gatsby, allow you to show fund balances as revenue source. So you cannot have an unbalanced budget. So in our case, the revenue source was fund balance to budget it. Now, let's talk a little bit about that. We just used the term budgeted. Budgeted is planned for. What the city did when COVID happened was became very conservative in revenue projections. There were two major sources that we said, let's not be liberal on projecting revenue. They were property tax value, and they were hotel motel tax. Hotel motel tax was the revenue source. We had the most deepest dip that's now recovered. Property tax never really dipped during COVID. Now, we still were very cautious, and what we did was we budgeted a structural deficit. Staff informed council that somewhere around $2 million is the most we would use. But what this did was allow the city council to keep the same level of services. During 2021 and 2022 and into 2023, you did not see a decrease in the level of services. You also then aggressively worked with police compensation during that time. Part of the change to 3.040 mils last year was to pay police increases. So what the city did was we said, let's be conservative on the revenue, standard on the expenditures, and budget fund balance. But in none of these years after COVID did we use this. That would have been an actual one. Okay, this chart is ugly. This chart is big, and I'll admit to that. But this is the exact way to show it. I'm going to show the detail in a summary form on the next slide. This is actually what's going to be in the audit, and then I'm going to explain the things with ARP and CARES money. Okay, let's go from this, and let me go left to right on this. The far-left column is what's currently under peer review with our auditors. Our auditors get work on the budget, our external auditors. And what they do is, at this point, they've got drafts of the schedule. They're going through reviews, seeing changes that they will recommend or require of us. But this is the draft figure for the general fund, again, going left to right. What I do in this one is because of accounting standards, Gatsby standards, which are updated almost yearly. So if you don't keep up to date with it, you're far behind. So 2023 standards are not the same as they were in 2000. So we do three different things to the column on the left. The first thing we do is we add ARP1 in it, and that's the actual ARP money. Unlike some cities, we didn't use ARP funding to supplement current city operations. Some cities did that, and I'll actually say in Georgia, it's not many. It tends to be more western cities and more northeastern cities that used it as a revenue replacement. Now, technically, that's the term we should use. But what we did with ARP was we took the money that freed up and created ARP2. And that, the city council told staff that what we want to do as a city is to go ahead and do the same thing we would do with ARP, but remove the federal strings. And I think that was one of the best moves you could do possible. It removed the time constraints. It allowed us to be slower, and it allowed us to plan better for it. The next thing we have to do is those monies for ARP2 and CARES2, which is a little bit from the past, we had to remove those to get to the final column. This is a true cleaned-up general fund number, but I wanted to show the steps so that everybody involved can see what happened. Now, let's go top to bottom, and I'm going to use some terms here that, just to keep it a little bit simple. Basically, the starting fund balance for the general fund in 2022 was 25.3 million. The city received about 32.1 million of ongoing revenue. That's regular ongoing revenue, and a little bit of one-time revenue from the sale of an asset. Now, the reason I bring this up is, remember I told you about the structural deficit? This is where it was. The budgeted figure was more like about 20, high 29, 29, 9, or 30 even million. That's where the structural deficit was. We knew kind of that hotel motel would probably improve over the year. We thought the digest would be at about 5 or 6%, but we didn't want to take the chance. Because if you do that and you overestimate your revenue, you have to cut your expenditures. Okay, now let's go to recurring expenditures. Recurring expenditures were just at about 28 million out of a budget of about 30. Now, that 30 million is, and spending about 28 is typical. Your average department here will spend about 95% of their funding. Have to say, a lot of that has to do with internal management practices. The department heads here do not think of use-it-or-lose-it mentality. Some jurisdictions do that. But here, all the department heads know that they've got to be stewards of the resources that they've got. So there's no, like, real rush to spend in December. Hence, we get a little bit lower on expenditures. Two million of this is one-time expenditures, which count, that was the Art Center and the Nature Center funding. So that would not count to a structural deficit. So the raw gain in use of fund balance was about 2.2 million, 2.26. Okay, that was showing that we do not run a deficit in 2022 based upon the current audit. You also can look at the structural gain, and it's a little bit different. It's 4.2 million because that 2 million counts only as a one-time expenditure. Now, the bottom is the ending fund balance. I want to show this because this is showing, again, the financial health of the city. The ending fund balance would be 28 million, but you have to take out a few things because they're reserved for other things. They're reserved primarily for prepaid purchases, and they're reserved for POs that have been issued that will pay for the next year. So in the end, the city still has $23 million worth of fund balance available at the end of 2022, which is around the nine-month level. Four months is minimum for what we have for policy, and higher is better. And in today's world, I feel more comfortable with a higher fund balance, especially if the bonds are approved by the citizen and we take things to market. Just some other data on the tax digest is just to let you know, this is to show you where the tax burden lies. We are a city where about 62% of property taxes are paid for by commercial properties, and residential is about a third. Now, the rest, public utilities, personal items, and things like that, that's a very small sliver of it. But we're basically two-thirds commercial, one-third residential on what is taxed. The actual value is closer to 50/50, but that's the next slide. The city of Dunwoody, because of two, actually has four major exemptions. Two are very small. There are basic exemption for homeowners and an extra exemption for those that have an age and income requirement tied to it. That's about 8% of exemptions. But the frees that we've been talking about throughout this presentation and the one-mill reduction are over a billion dollars worth of tax exemptions on the digest from the get-go. So before tax bills are even printed or anything like that, the city of Dunwoody has already reduced the taxable value of homes by a billion dollars in aggregate. We have a $5.3 billion tax digest net. So it shows you that the impact of those two alone are huge. So when you start talking about taxes and that we're the lowest in the county in the aggregate rate, these exemptions alone even push it farther down as far as tax burdens for the citizens. Next steps on this, exactly as you saw before, just the bottom three. This is the first of three public hearings. We'll publish the five-year ad at the end of the month. There'll be another public hearing tonight, and then a final public hearing adoption on July 11th. And that is the presentation.
Thank you. All right, unless I see an objection, I will open the public hearing. Seeing no objection, the public hearing is open. We can ask questions of staff after the public hearing part. People here, we do for and against still, right? Okay, so people here to speak for establishing the, I don't even know what I'm at, 20, establishing the 2023 millage rate. You have the podium. There'll be 10 minutes for each side. People here to seeing no one, people here to speak against establishing the millage rate for 2023, you'll have 10 minutes. Good morning, Mr. Hickey. Just make sure that, I'm sure Jay left the green light on.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Appreciate your time. I'm against the adoption of the of the 3.04 millage rate. I think it ought to be rolled back to the 2.74. That was the millage rate before the adoption of the increase last year. I think when you go through those slides that Mr. Venicki showed today and compare them to the slides he showed last year at the same time to increase it, it's a big, big difference, okay? Last year, he used the word for 2022, he used the word structural deficit. I forgot how many times. I have my slide, but numerous, numerous times the word structural deficit was used, which was in an attempt to scare all of us into raising the millage rate to the 3.04. This year, just by magic, okay? We go from a structural deficit last year to a structural gain this year. Magic. But one of the reasons for that is we're doing this setting of the millage rate too soon. Too soon. There's not been a single budget meeting yet. How do we know what we're spending? And we're trying to set one of the principal sources of revenue. Secondly, last year ends, financial statements are not available to the public. They may be available to you guys, but they're not to the public. They won't be available for at least another 30 days. As a citizen, I can't operate without facts, and I don't have the facts on what last year's 2022 financial affairs of the city came out to be. So I think it's too early, too soon, and with not enough data. And we ought to roll it back to last year based upon the same preliminary data that we had last year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other public speaker, people here for public comment, I close the public hearing unless there's an objection. Closed. All right, now, council, we get to ask Mr. Venicki or anybody else on the staff questions.
Jay, tell us about the possible rollback situation in the sense of the revenue coming to the city. Where, what's the difference between where we are today with the 3.04 versus the rollback number that's possible, like it's the 1%? How much is the revenue that's coming to the city and the difference to that?
I will, I think it's 175, but if you allow me a second to check, if you ask me a question that's not looking up a number, I can do that.
I was looking through the documents. I was trying to find the hard number. How much revenue is coming to the city of Dunwoody?
It's on it's on the, what's called the PT 32.1, for those that want to geek out on it. It is.
Richard's coming up behind you.
And he may know it off the top of his head quicker than I do.
He's got papers.
Thank you. That's my favorite line of all. He's got papers. Because you're asking it in a way, and I get where you're asking. It's a way that we don't tend to calculate off of it.
Right, but that's the budget committee might want to know.
Yeah, it should be around 175. I can double-check for you before the evening here. I can do it afterwards. Just to give you the number that is the raw, the raw increase will be 667,000 in the raw term, and we budgeted about 300. So the increase, probably about 175, is what the rollback would decrease to, but I can double-check that.
All right, but the revenue is $600,000 more.
But not. Yeah, this is where, this is where this law is not fun to explain. That is raw change over change, but our tax increase, three points, like a quiz show, seven, eight, eight. And it's so small, 2.933, .047.
Well, how about this?
Just bring it to us tonight. That's okay with Councilman Henigan. You can just answer it tonight.
Well, Jay, if you could add that to your presentation tonight, so I don't have to ask the question.
Easy enough.
Just, what's the revenue increase for, that's all I'm really looking for. Thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Jay. I always, just with these annual meanings, like to put things in a little bit of perspective for everybody. Because, you know, and I'll start with, I have my own personal assessment, which I got in the mail like a week or two ago. And just to, in my opinion, I think the the city of Dunwoody has done a tremendous job in taking care, being good stewards of the money received from our residents, the tax money, and we provide exceptional value. And just to put that in perspective, I pay exactly $8.80 more per year for my city taxes than I do for my once-a-week sanitation pickup. That's right on my tax bill. $8.80 more, parks, paving, police, et cetera. Again, just trying to put that in a little bit of perspective. I also just want to make sure that it's clear, there was a lot of talk about assessments, I mean, I'm sorry, about the taxes will not go up. The city portion will not go up, however, the school system portion of your tax bill is not frozen. So if your assessment goes up, the school system tax will go up, and I just want to make sure that's clear because that is, as was pointed out in one of the slides, what you actually, the check you actually write to the tax the tax commissioner, 84% of the typical home is to the school system. The school system is having their hearings today as well. They have one this morning and one this evening. I don't know when the third meeting is. I actually spoke with our local school board rep last week to discuss this. The millage rate that the school system is looking to establish is keeping it the same at 23.08. And I've asked our school board rep, she texted me this morning, she's not gotten a reply. She's working with the CFO and the attorneys of the school system. However, she did assure me that she will ask these questions on record during the meetings today. The state of Georgia has a cap for education millage at 20 mils. We are 3.08 over that. And again, putting things in perspective, they are over the cap by more than the city of Dunwoody charges in entirety. We are 3.04 for all your city taxes. They are over the cap by 3.08. So that was done years ago. That was established by the state of Georgia. There are 180 school systems in Georgia, only three are above the cap. Muskogee, DeKalb, and Rockdale. The reason why DeKalb was over was for a technical college that they no longer operate, was taken over by Georgia perimeter and now Georgia State, but they kept the additional millage. And so what I've asked of our local school board rep, and she's working on it for us, is to determine the justification for keeping us above the state cap on the school board, on the school millage, as well as looking into a possible rollback on the school taxes as well, because there's been the decline in enrollment. It was actually something that was talked about last year because they, quite honestly, had excess revenue last year. They elected not to do it last year primarily because they were having issues with some of the facilities, the Northwood Hills thing, and they wanted to make sure they had funds available to fix that, but that doesn't appear to be an issue for this year. So she's working on it for us. I don't have an answer, and we'll see what happens there. So I just wanted to point that out. I also want to point out, you mentioned the bonds, and you know, there'll be a lot of discussion coming up. If the voters do approve the referendum in November, homesteaded properties, the aggregate tax level for the city of Dunwoody will still be the lowest in the county, even with the additional bond millage attached. That's for homesteaded properties. So I just thought that was worth pointing out as well, but that's all I have. Thanks.
And I can update Council Henigan's number. It's 177,000. I knew it was around a 175 figure.
Anybody else? John?
I'll just throw a comment in there regarding Councilman Lambert's issue with the DeKalb school system millage rate. If I remember correctly, Senator Fran Malar had a If I remember correctly, Senator Fran Malar had a number of hearings, a number of actions trying to move that down. And I believe it's state laws required to change it, otherwise it would have been changed previously. But, um, again, Fran Malar worked on that a number of times, trying to get the state to take action on lowering the millage rate for DeKalb County School System, and I don't believe it was successful, but you're absolutely right regarding the, um, technical schools or the school system that you've mentioned, so, thank you. One thing, it might be a state problem, so we might need to talk to our state representatives as well.
So that would be, if, as I understand it, that would have been for the state to force the issue, they would have to change it, but there's nothing to keep the school board from rolling, just to be clear, the school board can take action, it's not mandated, they have that. All right, anybody else? Seeing none, oh, public comments? Um, seeing none, uh, thank you.
Second.
A move by Joe, second by Rob, all in favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned, see.